There we go. Thank you, Elena. All right, so welcome again, everyone, to the, our meeting tonight. Again, we do have five candidates that are here joining us tonight, and I appreciate all of you taking the time. I do want to reiterate that we asked these same questions that we asked during our mayoral forum during our April meeting. These questions were submitted from our members via a form that we put a link to in our newsletter, and we wanted to try to keep things standard. So we used same questions. We did remove one that was specific to mayoral forums for the mayoral candidates. And other than that, they are the same questions. You can find those questions on our website if you would like to see them. And let's see, I believe Elizabeth was going to help me with drawing names randomly from preferably a Delray bag, if we have it, as we did last go around. Myself and/or James, our vice president, we will be timing you as you start your five minutes. And so we will jump in when you have probably about 30 seconds left and then let you know when you've hit your five. Without further ado, I'm going to let Elizabeth start us off, and I will be helping with timer.
All right, I didn't have time to grab a DRCA bag, so I just went with the purple bag that was next to me. All right, coming up first is Jesse.
Hi, should I go and get started? Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you, we're good, yep.
Good. Good evening, everybody. I'm Jesse O'Connell. I am a dad with two kids in the public schools. I have a fifth grader and a second grader right down the street at Mount Vernon Elementary. I live in Delray. I'm a youth sports coach and I'm a longtime city volunteer. I've chaired the city's budget commission. I've served on the park and rec commission. I'm currently on the board of the Dash Bus System. I'm on the board of the Scholarship Fund of Alexandria. And I've done all that because I truly love living in Alexandria and Delray. People who know me think I only own two t-shirts. One of them says ALX on the front, one of them says Delray on the front. You know, we have hosted the Mount Vernon fundraiser in our backyard for years prior to that movement of the parking lot. We have been on the Delray home tour now two times. Please, everyone, remember to buy your tickets for Saturday. I think we're up to 450-plus tickets sold for that, which is fantastic for the fundraiser. I volunteer with the Big Flea. You know, I spend enough time in local businesses like Gustav and Bill Blackburn's places that I'm pretty sure I owe them rent at this point, and I have spent many an evening on the lawn at Cinema Delray. So I really do love this community, and that, I think, is what has driven me to be so involved in this community. You know, my folks raised me to be somebody that when you see a place you love, don't assume that it's staying that way out of inertia or out of status quo, but there's a tremendous amount of invisible labor going into making all of those places great. And again, I think that is super emblematic of what Delray is. When you think about Art in the Avenue, when you think about the farmer's market, when you think about all of the other things that people really embrace about this community, they are being driven by dedicated volunteers who are giving their time to, you know, give back to this community. So, you know, I'm running for city council because I am at a stage in my life here in the community where I'm seeing, like I said, I have young kids. Me and my friends, I see a lot of the pressures that families face in Alexandria, right? Alexandria is rightfully thought of as a place that is wonderful to raise a family, but we also know that housing is expensive. We know that childcare, both high-quality childcare is hard to come by and is expensive. The activities that we want families to be able to do are sort of constantly a capacity to say nothing of our schools and the capacity challenges that we're seeing across Alexandria, but particularly in our West End neighborhoods and right here at Mount Vernon Elementary. So I think these issues that matter to families are something that I care a lot about. And, you know, my experience doing different things in the city has also given me some insight into the way that Alexandria can be stretched thin at times, right? We provide a ton of great services, but we also need to make sure that we are meeting the needs of communities across the whole city. So these are the sort of issues that I really want to tackle. I've been spending a lot of time talking about parks and open space, right? You know, I've spent time on the park and rec commission. I'm a youth, I coach Little League, I've coached basketball. I don't think our parks and rec centers are as nice as Fairfax. I don't think they're as nice as Arlington. And I don't think these are sort of like afterthought, nice-to-have amenities. I think the ability to be outside is a foundational part of forming communities. You know, right here in Delray, I think it's candidly unforgivable that the Simpson Dog Park has been closed for, you know, a year plus at this point, that we can't get the dog park here in Oakville opened in the first place. I think when people look around at things like this that seem relatively straightforward, like this is something that, you know, feels like should be accomplished in a matter of months, and it drags on. It erodes people's faith in the ability of government to do big things. And I'm someone that thinks government has to be able to do big things. I think government has to sort of play a role in raising the commonwealth and the general welfare of lots of different people. So, you know, on council, I want to be someone that also cares about those small things, right? Sort of paving potholes, holding our contractors accountable so they don't tear up roads three times in a matter of two weeks to first put down King and then put in the gas line and then fix the water line. And, you know, the sort of common sense things that people notice and they want to understand why they aren't going better. So I know I'm running low on time. I want to hit some of these questions. You know, some things I think that the city does well. I love that Alexandria tries stuff, right? When you look at our basic income pilot program, when you look at sort of a grant program that we did during COVID to sustain childcare. I love that we take a shot at trying new things. I think Alexandria does fun well. I think we do a good job bringing visitors to the city and hosting compelling things though for residents and those that aren't from here. What are some mistakes that I think Alexandria has made recently? I don't think we've done a great job planning for opportunity, right? I think we, big stuff comes up, and I think we find ourselves in the back foot because we either haven't put money aside. This was the truth with Cameron Run about seven or eight years back. We did not have the funds to repossess Cameron Run and do something.
Thirty seconds.
And obviously, more recently, sort of with, you know, not constantly socializing our small area plans so that people understand what's in those, that we see the vision of the future, the city we want to be 10 years from now. So that when opportunities do come up, we're sort of having a collective conversation rather than sort of people feeling like they're really caught off guard by things. You know, I touched on schools briefly. I care a lot about the schools. I think we need to have a relationship with school board where we can get the outcomes that we want, particularly when it comes to new school construction, including a second high school. I am five seconds over Katie, so I'm gonna stop.
Thank you, Jesse. Again, I'm very sorry, everyone. We'd hope to have more time for each of the candidates and our land use votes. Just, we were afraid that they might take a bit tonight. Thank you so much, Jesse. All right, Elizabeth, you are up. Also for everybody, I'm gonna start your time at the point that you say like hello or whatever your opening thing is. So don't feel like in the minute she calls your name, your time starts. I want to try to give you guys as much time as I can.
All right, next up, we have Kirk.
Can y'all hear me okay? Yep, okay, great. Well, I'm Kirk McPike, and I'm very excited to be with you here this evening. I'm a current member of the city council. I've served this city in this role for the last two years, and I really appreciate the great honor that you and the other residents of Alexandria gave me three years ago in electing me to this position. I live on the west end of the city today with my husband Jason and my beagle punky, who you may hear walking around in the background, because I just got home from work, and she is very excited about that fact and doesn't understand why I'm sitting at the table right now. But before I lived here, I lived in several places in the city. I first lived in the Fox Chase Apartments, and then later I lived very close to Delray at the Reserve Apartments directly across the street from Potomac Yards. And when I lived there, I would walk into Delray regularly to eat, to shop, to walk just past there to get to Russell Road, to go to Grace Church, which is the church that I'm a member of. And Delray has been a part of my Alexandria experience for as long as I've been here. 14 years of living in Alexandria has shown me time and again just how wonderful this place is, not just because of our historic neighborhoods and beautiful buildings and incredible waterfront, because of the people who live here. And that is why so much, I so enjoy serving on the city council is it gives me an opportunity to serve the people that live in this city. Over the last two years, I'm very proud of some of the things the current city council has accomplished. We've taken big swings on some of the largest challenges facing the city, and we've made progress on them. On the affordable housing front, we reformed our zoning laws to make it easier for us to create the housing that we need. And we've used our budgets to try to advance the production of affordable homes here in the city. I worked with Aaliyah Gaskins when she led the effort two years ago in our budget to increase from one half penny to one full penny, the amount of funds from our property tax rate that we dedicate every year to affordable housing. And this year, I worked to bring $3 million more into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to provide funding for projects around the city that we have approved that are ready to be built. They're just not funded yet, and we need to move the dollars into them that we need to get those projects moving forward. We've focused a lot on climate change and the impacts of climate change. Sarah Bagley, I believe, is gonna speak later this evening, and I was proud to support her as we created the Office of Climate Action in the city two years ago, taking all the disparate people across our city infrastructure who focused on climate issues and bringing them under one office to expedite our work and increase the volume of good things we can do to help our environment. Because we see firsthand in Delray, in Rosemont, in Old Town, the impacts of climate change on our city and our infrastructure. That's why we formed, the previous council formed, the Ad Hoc Stormwater Committee, put in place the stormwater fee, and started the process of doing the real work that needs to be done to fix the flooding issues we face around the city. I've been very proud to continue supporting that work and voting to make the Ad Hoc Committee a permanent committee, because this is an issue that will take many years to correct, and we shouldn't put a time limit on when we're gonna take public input on it. Public input's been a real focus of mine on the council as well. As a member of the city council, I decided that I wanted to help us better interact with our residents and hear from them about the issues that are facing them every day. So I started a series of city council town halls. At first, it was just a couple of us putting them together on our own and inviting people, but as of last year's budget, we put these into the budget. Now we're holding quarterly events where we invite the residents of Alexandria to come to us and speak to us about the issues that are facing them. Issues like public safety, which we heard a little bit about at the top of this meeting. And I'm proud of my work on the council to support our first responders. I pushed hard for a larger raise than the city manager wanted to give them in the first budget when I was on council and to support the collective bargaining agreements that are allowing our officers to continue to be paid well so we can address our police and fire needs in the city. And I'm also very honored to have the endorsement of the firefighters as I run for reelection. So we've taken some big swings on big issues, but there's more that needs to be done on housing, on climate, on transit and traffic. And that's why I'm running for reelection. I want to take my experience on council from the last three years, combining with my experience as a member of the Budget Advisory Committee on the city, for the city before I was elected, and help us navigate through what will be some pretty choppy fiscal waters for the city in the years to come. I love the questions that y'all sent in. I'd love to have an opportunity to go through some of them. In terms of city operations, things that we do well, I think there's two programs in particular that
Thirty seconds.
that Alexandria has done well that our neighboring jurisdictions either envy or are trying to copy. The first is our fare-free Dash system. We've taken Dash and made it even more accessible to the people who need it most by changing the Dash network and reducing fares to zero so that we can give people the opportunity to travel around our city without putting an economic burden on them. That's why Dash has been soaring up above others in terms of restoration of ridership in the wake of the pandemic. And the second is the public safety function, our A-COR program, Alexandria Co-Response Program, pairs a police officer with a mental health professional. It's a great program. Others are stealing about, sealing it around the area. Please check out my website, KirkMcPike.com, to learn more about me, and thank you for those very quick five minutes.
Thank you, Kirk. All right, Elizabeth.
Okay, let me throw Abdell's name in here as well, because I see he has joined the call. All right. Sarah.
Okay, can y'all hear me? All right, well, instead of a campaign sign, I have the "Universal Alexandria" sign, which is a dog. Behold, you can start my timer, Katie. I'm willing to just, you know, it's worth it. So that's Buster, and I'm Sarah Bagley. And we, we live here for no reason, no spouse, no job, no kids in the schools. Nothing keeps me here except the fact that I live here and I love it here and I chose it here. And that was true in, you know, at several points when I could have, when I could have made other changes and made other moves, and I have continued to double down on this city. And my connection to this city really began through service. I was volunteering for Hillary knocking doors in 2016. That's how I came to know the neighborhoods. In 2017, I was making phone calls for Ralph Northam when a crew from Moms Demand Action walked in in their red shirts. And I said, "Oh, I love what you guys do. I don't have children, but I love what you do." And they said, "No, no, that doesn't matter. You're one of us." So I joined Moms Demand Action, and before I knew it, I was the local event lead. And I, that's how I came to know so many doors, one by one. And I tabled at your farmer's markets in Delray, at Old Town, all over the place. I spoke in Richmond. I spoke on Capitol Hill. I spoke before our city council. And it's part of that testimony that I gave, which is why we now have guns banned in our, in our parks and in our city spaces. And I think the question, one of the questions we got was about something in our personal, professional life around council that you're proud of. And I think that's a great place to start, because I have continued that work to make our community safer since joining this council. Within weeks of joining council in 2022, I connected with Greg Parks, the clerk of our court. And I said, "Hey, Greg, people come to you to get concealed carry permits. They're basically presenting themselves as gun owners and people who want to do the right thing. What if you offered them gun and trigger locks right then and safe storage information?" And Greg, to his credit, jumped right in, and I'm really proud to say that we've gone from giving out like 50 or 60 of those a year to 500 or 600 a year, and that it's making our community safer in a tangible way. And that's one example of sort of how I would govern. I would take the examples from my advocacy work, the examples from tangible proven methods, and then try to apply them and collaborate. I'm also really proud of the work we've done on housing, the work we've done on climate. My colleague Kirk McPike already spoke to a few of those. But one of the other things I want to touch on honestly is the collaborative nature of the council work that I think we have demonstrated in recent years. We can accomplish so much more when several of us put our heads together and talk about issues like housing, like climate, like transit. And in all of those issues, I have found partners. I have worked with KANEC on transit issues. I have worked with Aaliyah on schools issues and on out-of-school time issues and summer youth employment. I have worked with Kirk on climate issues, on housing issues. He co-signed most of my budget ads, and I have co-signed others. And I want to emphasize that tonight, because the bottom line is, we don't want our, our local government to look like Congress. We want a local government that gets things done, that works hard, that works together, and that figures out how to solve problems, not just argue about them and disagree. And that's what I'm most proud of in my time so far, is I can point demonstrably to the rental inspection program that I expanded. We have a real problem in our aging and existing housing, our market affordable housing, a lot of it on the West End, built in the 70s and 80s, that isn't in great shape. And those residents, simply because they're affordable, should not be in subpar conditions. So I expanded our rental inspection program. I care deeply about bike and pedestrian safety and the safety of people walking on our sidewalks and getting around our streets. So in year one, I added a position to our complete streets program and expanded that staff. And we are now seeing the fruits of that labor as we see increased bike projects, increased crosswalk projects. And I can't wait to sit down. One of the questions you guys ask is, "What are your priorities, goals while in office?" And a second term, we've got the ball rolling on housing. We're working on climate, but I want to continue to make these streets safer. I want to get down to the nitty-gritty. Y'all know that I've talked about daylighting. I want to push those cars back off the intersections. I want to raise our crosswalks. I want to have the right signage. I want no turn on red to be the assumption everywhere we go. And I know that mixes feelings, but it's a proven safer way to interact. And so I kind of skipped over and jumped right into council, because I'm fired up tonight, and I want to just talk passionately about the things I care about. But for anybody who hasn't met me before, part of what you're seeing here
Thirty seconds.
Part of what you're seeing here is my 10 years as a trial lawyer. The judge only gives you a little bit of time, so you gotta dive right in. So I spent 10 years practicing law. I sort of felt like a sellout, so I left. And now I've spent nine years running an affordable housing nonprofit. That has taught me about housing challenges, about what it is to be a landlord, about food insecurity, about transportation challenges, about senior isolation. All of this context I intend to bring to council. And if we can make the city better for all of those people, all those marginalized people, it's better for all of us.
You're up, bye. Thank you so much, Sarah. You guys are really nailing this five-minute thing. I could not do it. I applaud you all. Elizabeth, you're up.
All right, next up, we have Jimmy.
Hey, everybody. Thanks so much for joining me, for joining tonight. My name's Jimmy Lewis. I live on the west end of the city as well. If you're familiar with Shooter McGee's, they're my next-door neighbor. I've been in the city, though, 13 years and had a chance to live sort of across the city, Fox Chase, South Old Town, North Old Town, and now up on the west end. And in that time, too, have been involved in civic associations like you. I was on the Board of Notice. And then when I moved into my neighborhood in Holmes Run, we didn't have a civic association. We are seven condo buildings, seven apartment buildings, and 23 townhouses. So we got everyone together, even during COVID, to start addressing some major issues that mattered to us. In particular, the Holmes Run Trail, and making sure that that was, you know, sort of accessible for people who were using it throughout COVID, especially since it was a corridor for a lot of us to go get our groceries. I've had a chance to get to know this city, block by block and intersection by intersection, because for the last 11 years, I've been on the traffic and parking board, which I now currently chair. I actually think I saw a lot of your names last Monday when we talked about the four intersections along Mount Vernon Avenue that desperately need updated, and was glad to vote in favor of all of those, as well as the intersection at Ashby, Montrose, and Glebe, which also desperately needs fixed. So very glad that that process is moving forward. Unfortunately, the engineering is gonna take a couple of years to get started, but we'll have those intersections better than they are today. And that's really one of the reasons, and that experience has taught me about why I wanted to run for council, is it's one thing to set a policy like Vision Zero. It's another thing to work with city staff, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, intersection by intersection, to actually make those intersections safer for everyone. And we passed a Vision Zero resolution six years ago, and last year, we had that first milestone of zero traffic fatalities. But that is not job complete, because we know that there unfortunately was just a traffic fatality in the city a couple of days ago. So we have to keep that work going. You know, pedestrian safety and traffic safety is top of mind for me. We have to make sure the potholes are filled. We have to make sure that our dig-one-hole policy is followed. It's unacceptable for people to not be able to access their homes and their driveways for several weeks at a time. That also then pushes people into other neighborhoods and creates conflicts between neighbors. That's not what anyone needs. We have a one-hole policy for a reason. We need to be enforcing it. Sorry that the utilities can't get their timing together. Those are the rules. They need to learn it. I think that that's also, that sort of detail-focused interest in the city is really what's driving a lot of my other concerns. Top of mind for me is mental health. We know COVID was hard on everyone, especially our young people and especially our older folks. Unfortunately, right now in the city, 20% of our client-facing mental health professionals are vacant. That's a recruitment and retention policy that we also see in our public safety workforce and in our educators. It's something we have to address and something we have to put front and center. I also work in the healthcare space. I'm a big fan of what we call no wrong door. Any door you walk into for the city, you should be able, from that door, to get connected to the mental health resources you and your family need. Beyond that, like everyone else, I'm super team affordable housing, but I also really want to focus on affordable homeownership. Let's create opportunities for people to get out of the rent trap and build generational wealth, because your landlord can change your rent every month, but your mortgage is set for 30 years when you have a fixed rate. So I think that's really top of mind for me, is something that's also really important, as well as accelerating our sustainability goals. We have a fantastic energy and climate action plan to get us to carbon zero by 2050. What are we waiting for? We've got a plan. Let's start executing on it, because we know the reality of climate change is driving flooding in our communities. That all of that needs to be addressed specifically. Additionally, too, I'm the vice president of the West End Business Association. And while we all had a conversation earlier this year about Potomac Yard and a potential arena, that conversation really reminded us how unbalanced our tax base is, that 82% of the burden is on residents and homeowners, and that's really unsustainable. How are we going to grow the commercial base in our city? How are we going to generate more tax dollars, because we all like the services our city provides, and no one is really jumping up and down for cuts? And I think front and center to that is it has to be easier to open a business in Alexandria. Right now, it can take up to two years to get a business license and an occupancy permit.
Thirty seconds.
For things like childcare, which we all know we desperately need. So I'll drop my information in the chat, but I do hope to have your support. In this race, I'm glad to be endorsed by the Realtors, the Firefighters, Nova Labor, as well as Sheriff Casey and Sheriff Dana Lawhorn and the LGBT Victory Fund. And most importantly, I hope to have your vote. Thank you all for your support and time.
Thank you, Jimmy. I think that that just leaves us with Abdell. So come off mute, and we can make sure we will hear you. And Abdell, I will start your timer. Let me get this one reset. I will start your timer as soon as you say hello. Welcome. I am, whatever your opening is, and also happy birthday to your son.
Thank you. Well, can you hear me first? Awesome. Well, thank you for that, Katie. And yes, it was my son's eighth birthday, so we have to celebrate before I come in. But thank you for having me, everyone. I really appreciate the opportunity. My name is Abdell Alnuvi. I am currently a school board member and a candidate for city council. And as I go through my presentation, you will see what sets me apart as a candidate. I think as Democrats, there are 11 Democrats in the race, and the biggest question you want to know was, who can get the job done and what qualifications do we have to be able to do that? So I have been an elected official who has been eager to ensure that we have a government that works for the people and that meets the needs of our constituents. My track record on the school board includes standing up for representation, standing up for accountability and transparency, while also delivering for our community, and that is a commitment I will keep if continued and if honored to be elected to city council. My journey living under dictatorship in the other Alexandria, I grew up in Alexandria, Egypt, a dictatorship where quality of life is poor, opportunities are few. I came to the US at the age of 20, delivered pizza, put myself through college, to be able to get the opportunity and get that college degree that will open up opportunities for me to become middle-class. And I did. I got a college degree debt-free because of public universities and because of Pell Grants. These are policies that we have in this country that make us the country of opportunities, that made me realize how government policy can be transformational and make me want to continue to give back to our community. I'm proud to call this Alexandria home for the last 13 years now. I, myself, my wife, and our two kids. I've been an HPS parent for over eight years at this point. I'm also an engineer. I am trained to solve problems, to analyze problems in systematic ways and find optimal solutions. I also have over 11 years professional experience in transportation. And these are also two credentials that I don't believe is shared by anybody else in the race. So I'm equipped to tackle our city's complex challenges and improve the quality of life for all of us and for our kids and the future of our city. But I also realize we can't solve problems in isolation. We have to be strategic. When we solve one problem in one area, we have to be mindful not to create a problem in a different area. And that's how I operate as an engineer and think about problems. Before the school board, I was a PTA president, Community Criminal Justice Board, appointed by city council. I was a grassroots activist, fighting with grassroots Alexandria, fighting for social justice for our marginalized communities. I was also a Democrat, I was also a co-vice chair for Alexandria Democratic Committee and a precinct captain. I also coached soccer for our kids in the community. So I'm deeply involved and deeply committed to our community. As a school board member, I challenged some of the norms that I believe made the school board not as functional as it should be. Things like school board members not talking to their constituents through the press. I challenged that, and I was the most open school board member to the press, because we are accountable to the people. I asked tough questions. I did my homework. I pushed for more use of data and metrics. I spearheaded initiatives like increasing teacher pay, creating safer streets around our schools, trying to address classrooms overcrowding and its ongoing issues. But we opened one school, about to open the other. We have two more schools in the CIP, in the 10-year CIP, to address capacity and overcrowding. I added psychologists to support students' mental health, and we challenged Youngkin in court and beat him to keep our community safe during COVID. And on city council, I will continue to advocate for our community. I will advocate for more housing affordability, for educational excellence for our schools, for improved public transportation, for resilient infrastructure. I think one of the questions that were sent is, how will you be a link between the school, the school board and city council? I already, I can save you three years of building relationships with the school board, because I have existing relationships on the school board, built on trust with my colleagues that I worked with. And I'm endorsed by the chair, the vice chair, and a school board member, Ashley Simpson-Baird. So I can be that link and streamline that relationship, also have an intimate knowledge of that budget that's a third of our city budget. I will aim to enhance our transit and transportation system, make it multimodal, accessible, and that our streets are safe for our kids and for our pedestrians and our drivers. I will proactively address our housing affordability crisis while putting
Thirty seconds.
first by using things like our land use tools and zoning tools, tax incentives, partnerships, to make sure we are meeting the supply of not just affordable housing, but meaningful supply of housing in general that has been slow in the last three decades and causing this crisis we're in. And I will work to make sure that we have an infrastructure that resilient but sustainable. Make sure we implement that climate and climate change action plan, so we're reducing our greenhouse gases, while also make sure we improve our public safety in our community, where we have a good
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're at five. Thank you so much. Candidates, before you all drop off, I would love to invite you all to put your contact information into the chat, especially your websites, any email addresses if people can get ahold of you. Like I said at the beginning, guys, every one of these people, they are super, super passionate about talking to you, and they want to hear from you. And they want to hear from you. They would love to talk to you. And so if there was something that you didn't hear tonight that you'd like to know more about, I encourage you to reach out to all of them. They're all very easy to get ahold of and would love to talk to you more about the things that matter most to you. So candidates, feel free to drop stuff there in the chat. You're all welcome to stay. However, as we move into the land use portion of tonight, I do want to remind everyone that once we get to the voting portion, only our active members that are able to vote. So if you're an associate member or if you were a guest, you will not be able to vote tonight. Let's see, make sure.